Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Seems like it's been quite a while since we've been here, so welcome back. Welcome back, everybody on the board. I'd like to call the order. Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13. Regular school board meeting of Tuesday, February 11th, 2014. Meeting will open with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam Clark, roll call.
Meyer.
Here.
Landmark.
Here.
Larkin.
Here.
Bardell.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
Lee, here.
Great, thank you. This is our custom, our mission statement. Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with support of small-town communities by challenging all of our students to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. And always worth repeating, our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next on our agenda is the Agenda Approval: Adjustments, Announcements, and Correspondence. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda this evening?
I'll move that forward.
Motion by Laura, second by...
John.
John. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion has carried. Been a long day, John.
I hear ya.
Announcements. February 17th, Monday, there's no school, it's President's Day. February 18th, Tuesday, 6:00 PM, school board work session here in the community room. February 25th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM is the regular school board meeting here in the community room. March 11th, Tuesday, 5:00 PM Subcommittee on Policy in the Superintendent's Conference Room. March 11th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM is the regular school board meeting here in the community room. And March 17th to '21, no school, it is spring as opposed to winter break. All right. Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence?
Mr. Chair members, there's no correspondence at this time.
Very good, thank you. Move on to our communication to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board, however, will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Is there anyone who would like to come before the board? All right, seeing none, I think we'll move on. Our next agenda item is the Consent Agenda, which consists of minutes of the January 14th organizational meeting, January 14th, school board meeting, personnel report, and the treasurer's report for December 2013. I have a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll move that forward.
I'll second it again.
Motion by Laura, second by John. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Then that motion has carried. Thank you. Next on our agenda is Acknowledgement of Contributions. It is resolutions, and typically read these out loud. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests donations or gift for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as a trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the school board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13 that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $6,016.05. A donation of $100 each was made to Valley View Elementary and Highland Elementary by Columbia Heights Lion Club for hats and mittens for students. A donation of $100 each was made to Valley View Elementary and Highland Elementary by Columbia Heights Lions Club for the DARE program. A donation of $50 was made to Highland Elementary by Target Corporation. Facebook vote for favorite K-12 school for the educational supplies. A donation of $1,878.65 was made to Highland Elementary by Target Corporation Take Charge of Education for Educational Supplies. A donation of $1,499.40 was made to Valley View Elementary by Box Tops for Education for Student Needs. Falling donations were made to Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Fund. Val Wig, class of 2012, $1,000. Jan Leopold, $500. Donation of hat and mittens to Valley View Elementary and Highland Elementary from Andy Burcher, estimated value $490. Donation of toys to Highland Elementary Kindergarten from Michelle DeWitt, estimated value $200. Total fiscal year 2013-2014 monetary contributions to date, $24,781.10. Thanks to all the donors. All right, so we need a motion. It's a resolution, right?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ted, second by Lori. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Meyer.
Aye.
Landmark.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Bardell.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Lee, aye.
Very good, thank you very much. All right. Next on our agenda, Discussion Reports and Information Items. Board members will report on board activities since the last regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Ms. Lori Meyer, please.
The January Work Study, I think. I think that's all I had to report at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ted Lane, where?
I was also at the January Work Study, and I just want to thank the board for a very frank and a great discussion on our board. We started our board evaluation, so that was a good thing. And then I also attended the boys' basketball game, the tail end after that, and went to Heights to Home meeting, which I'm very excited about. It was at Mersham Hall, and it was an outreach by the high school staff to parents and community members. I think district staffed as well was there in bringing the school out to the community so that we can actually be, the district can be more engaging to parents and ask any, you know, parents can ask any questions that they would have at that, at those meetings. So I would encourage everyone to take advantage of that if they can. It'll be, I think there are a couple more meetings coming up. Was also at the MSBA Conference, Leadership Conference, and heard a very inspirational speaker there, and this is in every, every January MSBA has this conference for school, just for school board members to help brush up on our skills. And Scott Burrows was the speaker, he's a quadriplegic, and the theme was on grit and how Mr. Burrows did not allow his quadriplegia to limit himself. He was, worked tirelessly and did not take no for an answer, and at the end of his talk, he actually got out of his wheelchair and walked, which is something that surprised all of us. So it was very inspirational. And so hopefully, we can carry that through to our district and accomplish things that we didn't think were possible. Also attended a board chair session on, you know, the MSBA, school board associations, recommendations for school board chairs, continuous improvement session. There's an exciting software package out called Precious Status, and helped, helping to bring parents more into the daily routines of their students by increasing communication to their smartphones. And then also went to a session on the Minnesota STEM Network, on just all the resources that are available for STEM that are, it's ever-growing, which is very exciting. STEM is science, technology, engineering, and math. So I'm going to have a little session with Superintendent Kelly later on, and appreciate, I look forward to that, going over this information. And then also attended the Lions meeting and Chamber of Commerce meetings.
All right, very good. Mr. Larkin.
Thank you. I was also at the Work Study and am encouraged by the fact that as a group, we're working towards some, at least for me, more clear definitions of what, where we are and what our beliefs are to work together as a group. I'm excited about that. I also attended the Heights to Homes, and it's another example of the district going out of their way, it's not out of their way, doing innovative things to reach our parents, reach our community, and was really excited about that. And again, if there are additional meetings coming up, I would encourage people to attend that. I had the opportunity to stop down at Columbia Academy when they were hosting the robotics, I guess, I don't know if it's a tournament or an event or what they call it, but it was really, really cool. I mean, it was kids of all ages, had to have the robots do different things, and I know that the teams from Columbia Academy actually did really, really well. I know that their teacher or instructor was very pleased with their performance, and it was a big event. There was a lot of different schools there. I had the opportunity and the privilege to work also at Columbia Academy with the eighth grade science classes through the fire department. We came in and we were able to spend a couple days with the kids, introducing to them how science really does matter, and that there are things down the road that the things they're learning today will apply as well. So we talked a lot about the science of fire and had a good time with the kids, so appreciate that opportunity to be able to do that. And I think that's it.
Right, thanks, Chair. Ms. Laura Palmer.
I've been really busy. I started writing everything down, and we need to have meetings every two weeks because then this list doesn't get quite so long, because some things, I think, just require a little bit more discussion. Well, I did attend the MSBA Conference. It was kind of last minute, so I was very glad that an accommodation could be made. I brought back some interesting information, and I, following that up, I did have a meeting with Superintendent Kelly and Director Burkeis and Director Holmgren, and I look forward to seeing if anything kind of comes from that. Well, I guess we'll discuss that another, another time. I also attended the 916 Board Meeting, and they gave us some information on a literacy camp that some of the, some of their staff had attended last year, and some of the, some of the new techniques that they're using to help teach EBD four-level students how to do, how to read and write and have comprehension, and the results from that are really quite astonishing. So I'm hoping that we will, we will look into that and see if there's a lot more. If anybody is interesting, there's an interested, there's an Orange County study which goes into some of the philosophy of this training in more detail. So I'm going to just skip on. One of the fun things that I got to do was I got to attend the Winter Sing over at Highland and meet the new band director, Mr. Hanson. Mr. Hanson did a wonderful job with the kids, so that was, that was, it's really amazing when they're first starting out, it's just how far they come in that, you know, in that short period of time. I mean, they all get to actually play together at the same time, and that's pretty, pretty phenomenal. And of course, Mr. Rosas with the, with the singing portion of it, it's always great to see, and there were a lot of people there, there was no parking to be had, so that, I parked all the way over on the other side of the Highlander Center, so it was very well-attended. Of course, I also attended conferences over at Highland. The Work Study Session I also found to be extremely productive, and I'm really excited to see what else comes from that. And thank you very much, Mr. Larkin, for, you know, for really drilling down into those details and, and starting to discuss things that I think are important to all of us, you know, and I think that was very apparent, we were all very engaged. I really enjoyed that. And then, of course, this past Friday, I also attended my first Chamber of Commerce meeting, which was kind of interesting. So anyway, that's pretty much it for me.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Missy Lee.
Thank you. Well, I attended also the Work Study, and thank you to my fellow board members, it was, it was an interesting meeting, and I appreciated some of the feedback that we all gave each other. The other thing, I did attend Minnesota State School Board meeting in January, which was kind of the kickoff for the MSBA Leadership Conference, also MSBA-headed Washington. So they did take a booklet, I've got it here, if any of you guys want to look at it, see some of the things that they talked to Congress with. Some of the things were, of course, bullying, and school safety was big, and also child nutrition. So those were some of the major things on the docket, and it gave, in here is some real kind of fun facts about Minnesota and kids and money and all that kind of good stuff. So if you guys want to look at this, please feel free to do so. I also want to say that lots of compliments towards Columbia Heights and Show and Tell, which was, I had to bring the book because I don't know the full name, it was Realizing Educational Achievement at Columbia Heights, How Family Involvement Is Increasing Student Achievement. So there was a lot of good things said about Heights at the Leadership Conference on a state level, so I think that says a lot. Thank you, Director Burkeis, for seeing you there and supporting everyone and talking to a lot of board members. I also went to Community Engagement, Straight Talk From Students, and Building a Compelling School Identity. I have to say that I didn't get to sit in the Community Engagement, I think you did, didn't you, John? It was so packed that people, obviously, from my understanding, it is not just a Columbia Heights issue, there's an issue all over the state of Minnesota, that we really have a hard time with that communication and getting parents involved. Also, I went to a roundtable and sat with the Department of Education, talking about child nutrition. Needless to say, she was happy to see me leave, because I was not exactly, I'm not thrilled with the child nutrition and the things that are going on, I've made a special note of that, and I am continuing to follow up on a state and national level regarding child nutrition and how we're handling it on a school level. I also attended that same session with the keynote speaker, and I guess something that I came out of that with that I wanted to share with everyone is perception, is what is the perception? And the perception was is that this incredibly powerful speaker came to us in a wheelchair, and the perception was is that his message was his strength and how he got through this and how being in a wheelchair. And when he stood up in the end, you kind of almost thought, okay, maybe he's going to stand, but when he walked, that was amazing, because the perception was that he wasn't going to walk. And I think sometimes we take away from schools and the things that I've thought about recently is we take away what our perception is. So before we make a judgment call on a school, or on a child, or on a person, be sure that you know what the perception is and what really is behind that. So that's what I came away with that. It was really a strong message, and I think it was a strong message across the, across the state that the board members that were there. And I think I will be meeting again at the end of this month, going to the Capitol with the state board, meeting with senators and representatives, if anyone would like to speak to me regarding that. I would be more than happy to take any messages forward and would be looking forward to that. I think that's enough from me.
Thank you. Want to mention something?
Oh, Missy alluded to it, I just say I did attend the MSBA Conference as well, and the gentleman just talked, and I think the entire crowd held their breath when he walked towards the edge of the stage for fear that he might keep going, but, no, it was very inspirational.
Yeah.
Very.
His point was to take risks, you have to take risks.
It was just, it was a very powerful, and if you ever get an opportunity to read his books regarding grit and what he does, it's really, really something that you want to see, or if you can go and watch one of his speeches, it's amazing, it's amazing, and it's a good message on all the way across and on everything that he did.
Great, thank you. I'll begin with, I'm going to spend most of my time on the AMSD, the Association of Metropolitan School Districts Meeting, it was held last Friday, it's the Legislative Session Preview presenters, but I also got a lot out of the Work Study last week and look forward to continuing discussions in that area. Been to a lot of swim meets, basketball games, you know, those sorts of things, been a parent courier, you know, taking kids around, I know all of us can identify with that. In any event, Superintendent Kelly, I, and Ms. Director Holmgren, attended Legislative Session Preview at AMSD on Friday, and we started with some presenters, and I'll just quickly mention Superintendent Deidra Wells of Inver Grove Heights, and she talked about the School Facilities Finance Working Group that's going on through, you know, MDE and the Legislature and things like that. And basically, what, what she's talking about is somehow make funding of the schools more equitable, fairer, et cetera. And she had a presentation, broad recommendations, long-term facilities, maintenance, consolidation of funding streams, equalization, facilities, grants, special circumstances, funding for specific needs and entities, and review and comment process. So I think that's about it on that. Next, we had Superintendent Jay Houghan from Farmington, and Superintendent Houghan had an interesting talk, he talked about innovation zones where, where in his district, they just tell the staff they're free to use their strengths and talents and do whatever they feel they need to do in order to achieve student learning, and, and they, the idea of the innovation zones are to allow school districts to decide what and how to achieve the state's desired outcomes, and there's no direction from the state, basically, to say how to do it. It's, you know, these are the goals, you guys figure out the best way to meet them, and it went down to the school level, then they brought it down to the teacher level, just say, do whatever you think, you know, use your own judgment. We hired you for your skill and your judgment, figure it out, fix it, ask for help if you need it. So I thought that was very interesting, and the thing he liked about it was it's true accountability, because you're not telling people exactly what to do, you're saying, you know, figure it out, solve your problems, ask for help if you need it and support, but, you know, you're skilled and you know how to do it, so as far as instruction or anything like that in the classrooms, do what you think is necessary and correct for your particular class. So I thought that was an interesting talk. Superintendent Karen Orcott from Orono, thank you, talked about Q-COMP teacher evaluations in Orono schools, and it was basically, basically fund the schools that want Q-COMP, I guess, is, was basically her message, and, and that it works for some schools and maybe it doesn't work for others, and it was more of a personal choice. Anything else? Remember on that one? All right. Next, we had Superintendent Dennis Carlson from Noka Hennepin, and he talked about moving towards world's best workforce, of course, new legislation, things like that, and the key points of his talk were basically the schools, he boiled it down to support early learning, support early college efforts, and support creative educational partnerships, particularly with post, post-high school institutions. So, all right. Next, we had a few minutes with Commissioner Brenda Casilius, and she went over the Legislative Session from last year, talking about the, paid off the deficit, the 2.7 billion back to the schools, and talked about fourth-grade math, that Minnesota was the best in the nation, which is good news, doubling in mental health grants, et cetera, pass world's best workforce. What she talked about for this year and her plans was the Facilities Task Force, talk about adult diploma, where, you know, people could go back and, and get their diploma. The teacher licensure issue, they want to try to tackle that, so you have teachers from outstate, and they may not necessarily meet the letter of the law for Minnesota to try to figure out what, how to handle that from a state standpoint. She also mentioned that the new group of elementary kids will be ready for higher ed standards, and that the elementary kids coming up are really in tune to what they're doing, they're, you know, going strong, they love, generally love school, and are really moving ahead quickly. And so she mentioned that, you know, basically said schools, you know, figure out, because these students coming up, you're going to have to figure out how to keep up with these kids. And then, basically, the, she also mentioned that they're going to work on from 17- to 21-year-old kids. She emphasized and challenged the schools to reengage these kids with Minscue partnerships, the best you know how, so. And lastly, there was a panel, Senator Katie Seaborn, Senator Assistant Majority Leader, Senator David Hand, Senate Minority Leader, Paul Thiessen, Thiessen, I guess, Speaker of the House, and Kurt Dowd, House Minority Leader. And they basically talked and answered a few questions, and I think, to boil it down, I think they all have the ends in mind, I think they just have different ways that they'd want to get there, but I think they all agree on what we need to achieve as far as education in the state of Minnesota, so. And with that, I will turn it over to Superintendent Kelly.
Thank you, Chair Bardell. Members, I would agree with Scott, as far as AMSD, there seem to be two through lines, well, actually three, that people with aging facilities, such as our district, need to have access to the dollars that the other 22 or 23 bigger school districts have in the state, and that Tom Melcher and his facilities, all facilities groups really have come forward to say there needs to be equity with the buildings as well, because we all have aging roofs, we all have windows that need repairs, parking lots that need paving, and so they seem to all be wanting to talk about that and to wrestle with that a little bit, it's just trying to figure out how to get it done without having people that already get it be the biggest losers, I think. So that'll be theirs, it's kind of thorny for them to wrestle with. And the other two through lines that I heard a lot was age three, grade three, for literacy. Just about everybody was, was talking about that because the research is finally there and we're paying attention to it, and that felt, made me feel very good about this school district, because we've had all-day kindergarten for a very, very long time. And next year, we're expanding our four-year-old programs and, and putting them in the incubators and having them attend with us more hours, and that gives us also more room for the third grader, so. Michelle DeWitt and Kristen Stunkel and Dwayne Burkeis will be putting together a group or have a group, and they're already meeting, on how to articulate the curriculum and the performance of those students, so that's very, very exciting. And then in the area of career in college ready, or as I like to call it, post-secondary success for all, people seem to be in agreement that when children leave our schools, that all students should have a pathway and be aware of what that pathway is. And it's something that we can all get better at, but I believe that for, for many of us, it's new partners around the table, which brings me to the second series of meetings that I've been involved with, and I've said in my updates, and I came, I've had two meetings now, one was most of the day-to-day with Centennial, Roseville, Fridley, Moundsview, Spring Lake Park, and us, and Anoka Ramsey, to talk about what we're going to do with post-secondary success. Does that come in the form of early college? Does that come in the form of collaborations? Does that come in the form of asking Anoka Ramsey to partner with us and maybe have an innovation zone, where we really, as six districts, come to the table and say, how can we develop our staffs together? How can we do hybrid classes together? Really meaningful partnerships without competition that complement school districts. And that makes a lot of sense right now, and it really does give you the local control that you'd like to have, and still supports the students going through the system. And looking back, as far as grade three, age, age three, grade three, but also having markers, and as you know, we're going, we're very busily creating our own pathways around here, so that should, everything seems to be a perfect storm of coming together. In addition to that, there's been a lot of things going on, but I do want to say that, as Member Palmer said, that she brought some takeaways from the MSBA Leadership Conference, and Director Burkeis and Holmgren did sit in on that, and one of those really was in the area of career in college readiness, really raising that specter of if we want children to know how they do on an ACT test, are just administering the plan and the explore enough, or should we be asking them all to take the ACT or an Accuplacer, or something along those lines? And that was also brought up at today's meeting, so I just wanted you to know that, and it's something that we're going to be discussing. The second thing was in the area of vision cards, and was really kind of cool, actually, to see what another district did with, they did also work with teamwork, and they- to see what another district did with, they did also work with teamwork, and they had created a different kind of strategic roadmap, but with some real interesting ways to look at finance and accountability and student achievement. And so, that correlated with something that I was already thinking about from my seminar with the District Management Council on student achievement and accountability by tracking some things through the finance codes through TIES. So, it all seemed to be looping around. So, there's a lot of things that seem to be coming together in the universe right now, so it's a very exciting time, I think, to be involved. And that concludes my report.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Next, I think, is Superintendent Kelly. School Board will be recognized for their dedication and hard work to help build an education system that meets the needs of both today's and tomorrow's children. It is School Board Recognition Week.
It certainly is, and although we should recognize you all year, the actual week, the School Board Association has set is February 17th through the 21st, but in deference to you, we thought we'd start tonight and kick it off. School Boards in Minnesota, really, the purpose of the week is to build awareness about, really, the, and understanding of what school boards really do and the important role that they play in education in our society. And the Columbia Heights Public Schools are joining, and all of the school districts across the states, to really celebrate all of you and to honor local school board members for their commitments to Columbia Heights, Hilltops, and Southern Fridley, and its, and its children. It takes a strong, a strong school to build a strong community, and these people right here around this table devote countless hours to making sure that our schools are helping every child learn at a higher level. And they make tough decisions every month and spend many hours studying and, and on educational issues and regulations, attending conferences and bringing it back in order to provide the kind of accountability that really our, our community expects from all of us. School Board members give Columbia Heights citizens a voice in education, in the educational decision-making. And even though we make a special effort to show our appreciation in February, their contributions are really all year round. So, tonight, we have two tokens of our affection and appreciation for you. One is edible, but the calories are out of it and it's at your place. And the other one is a certificate of appreciation, in which I'm going to take the microphone over there and call you up individually and recognize you for your years of service. So, if you wouldn't mind, when I call your name, coming up and receiving your certificate. There we go. I'm going to start with Scott Bardell. What this says, what this says is School Board Recognition Week. The Minnesota School Boards Association honors Scott Bardell for dedicated leadership in public education and continuing service to the children of this community, and honoring seven years of service. So, thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Next, we have Missy Lee. And this certificate honors Missy Lee for her dedicated leadership in public education and continuing service to the children in our community. And Missy has 11 years. This is your 12th year. We're getting older by the minute. I'm just kidding. I'm not giving up a second. Congratulations. Next, we have Member Ted Landwehr, and we're honoring him for his dedicated leadership in public education and continuing service to our community for 11, excuse me, nine years. Is that correct? Because, I'm, I'm just saying, that's what the post-it note said. If you're good with it, I'm good with it too. Congratulations. Member John Larkin is being honored tonight for his dedicated leadership in public education and continuing service to the children of this community for one year of service. Congratulations, John. Next, we have Member Laura Palmer, oh, no, Member, oh, we're in alphabetical order, that's it. Member Lori Meyer, who will be coming forward for dedicated leadership in public education and continuing service to children in this community for one year of dedicated service. Lori, congratulations. And last, but certainly not least, is Laura Palmer, who will be honored tonight for dedicated leadership in public education and continuing service to the children of this community for three years of public service to this district. Thank you very much, Laura. How about another round of applause for all of you?
Thank you, Superintendent Kelly. And thanks for giving my son a cookie.
Oh, that's who got mine last year. Oh, mine did.
I'll bring it home and it'll magically disappear. All right. Next, on our agenda is the 21st Century Community Learning Grant data. And this evening, we have Kristin Stunkel, our Director of Community Education, and Dr. Kristin Dillon from Wilder Research. Welcome.
Thank you. Chair Bardell, members of the School Board, Superintendent Kelly, we are pleased to present our annual data evaluation, our evaluation and data for our 21st Century Community Learning Center grant. This has been a really important grant for our district over these past five years. This data will review the programming from 2012 to 13, so last school year. And as we look at our district's core values, certainly, community, which is embedded in the name of this grant, but also innovation, collaboration. This grant couldn't take place without an extensive network of collaborative partners between McPhail, Wilder, the Science Museum, the University of Minnesota STEM Program, Northern Clay, et cetera. This has been an important grant, and we're looking forward to Dr. Dillon's presentation about our, our evaluation. And then, we'll entertain any conversation or questions after that.
Thank you, Kristin. Thank you for welcoming me back this year. I've spoken to some of you before, and so hopefully, this isn't too repetitive, but I'm really excited to be here. Just as a little bit of background, we've been doing an evaluation of the 21st Century Community Learning Center grant. This is the fifth year of the grant, so we have four years' worth of data. And we collect data from a number of different sources. So, we have program attendance data. We also have participant demographic information, which comes from the TISA system. We have teacher-reported student progress surveys, which are required. They're a federal survey that MDE requires of us. And we also use student standardized test scores. We use the MAPS scores for this evaluation. And then, we collect satisfaction and outcome surveys from the students who are engaged in the 21st Century Community Learning Center programming. That's a big mouthful. So, just in a nutshell, the students that we had participate during the last academic year, as Kristin said, the 2012, 2013 year, we had 1,390 students participate. And the Department of Education uses a threshold for participation to look at dosage, and their threshold is 30 or more days of participation is considered retained. And so, you can see from this chart, about 40% of our students were considered recruited but not retained, and then the remaining students were considered retained, so they met that academic threshold. And then, as I mentioned, we have four years of data, which is incredibly exciting. So, you can see that we've had students that have participated all four years of the program. And then, we also have students that have participated for one, two, or three years. And this includes students that were new to the program in the last year, who may have just participated in that one-year bar. And the majority of our students were from the elementary school level, though we have had students from the middle school and high school, and those percentages have increased over the years. So, that's exciting to see. And one of the other things that I think is really exciting is that the students who participate in the 21st Century Community Learning Center grant tend to represent the overall student body demographically. So, you can see that in terms of gender on this slide, also in terms of race, race and ethnicity, and then also in terms of special education, limited English proficiency, or free or reduced-priced lunch. One notable thing is that we have a higher proportion of students who have limited English proficiency, who are engaged with the program. And if you look at those students who are retained, the ones who participate for 30 days or more, that proportion's even greater. So, it seems like the program is really resonating with that particular group of students. So, those of you that have seen me talk before, the layout of my presentation is a little bit different this year. So, this year, we're following the goals of the 21st Century Community Learning Center grant. And one of their goals is to increase the capacity of participants to become productive adults. And so, the way that we primarily measured that particular goal was through the Student Outcome and Satisfaction Survey. And here, you can see some of the key questions that we asked students that get at this. And overall, students had a high rate of responding, that they did agree that they had increased their capacity towards becoming productive adults, and in particular, they felt that the program would benefit them in the future, it has helped them do things that they feel good about, it's helped them get along with other people, make healthy choices, envision their life as a grown-up, and talk to others when they're upset. So, some of those important skills for being an adult. And then, of course, those students that participated more were statistically significantly more likely to say that they were able to talk to others when upset, make healthy choices, and feel good about themselves after participating in the program. So, those students that participated more tended to see greater benefit. Another 21st Century Community Learning Center goal is increased school connectedness of participants. And again, one of the ways that we got at this was asking students what they thought. And overall, most of the students reported that they learned new things, that being in the program has helped them do, do better in school by getting their homework done, participating in class more. And once again, those retained students, that group that was really highly engaged, tended to see even better outcomes than the students that were retained, or recruited, I'm sorry. And then, another way that we got at this particular goal was through that required federal teacher survey. And so, on that survey, we asked teachers to report if students needed improvement in a number of areas, and if so, whether they experienced improvement or they did not. And so, you can see here that around 80% of the teachers reporting on behalf of students said that they either did not need improvement or saw improvement in each of the skill areas that we asked about. Some of them were a little bit higher, some of them were a little bit lower, but I think overall, the, the takeaway message here is that the majority of the students that met that retained level, which are the students that we asked about here, were either not in need of improvement or saw improvement over the course of the academic year, according to their teachers. And then, one of the really wonderful findings that we had, because we have had multiple years of this study, is that the students that participated in previous years were more likely to enter the school year not needing improvement according to their primary teachers. And so, that's a wonderful sign that not only a number of days that they're participating, but the number of years that they're participating gets them started in an academic year on a, on the right foot. And that was true in the cases of participating in class, volunteering, attending class regularly, and being attentive in class in particular, that those areas had a statistically significant difference. All right. And then, the third goal of the 21st Century Community Learning Center grant is to increase the academic performance of participating students. And I know this is one that's really appealing for most of the audiences that we share this presentation with. Again, we use the federal teacher survey to get at this, as one of our ways of getting at this. And you can see that the percentages are pretty consistent with the previous slide that used this source of data, in that teachers tended to feel that students either did not need improvement or did show improvement after participating in the program. And you can see that, in particular, the academic performance area, there was a larger proportion of students that showed improvement than any other category. And once again, teachers were significantly less likely to report that students needed improvement if they had participated in previous years of the program. So, again, they entered the classroom, not needing as much improvement. And then, we use the standardized test data. And I have a couple of slides looking at this in different ways. So, this first one is showing increases between the spring and fall MAP testing in reading, math, and then both reading and math. And this is based on that level of participation. So, we looked at students that didn't participate at all in the 21st Century Community Learning Center program, students who were recruited, so they participated fewer than 30 days, and students that were retained, who participated 30 or more days. And there is a statistically significant difference between each of those groups of participation when, when looking at increases in reading, math, and both reading and math. And then, we know that one of the goals is not just an improvement, but that students really are at or above grade level in reading and math. And so, here you can see, for the retained students, so the students that participated 30 days or more, about half were at or above grade level in reading and math at the beginning of the academic year, but 71% were at or above grade level at the end of the academic year. And so, again, these are those higher dosage students, but I think this really points to the impact that the program can have. And there were statistically significant differences between the percentage that were at or above grade level in the fall, and the percentage that were at or above grade level in the spring. And so, kind of the last slide that I have on the standardized test data really addresses, again, that multiple years of programming, and it really speaks to why this program has had such a great impact in the school district over time. So, we've seen that if students participate 30 or more days, there are benefits, but here, if they participate multiple years, there are benefits. So, the students that participated four years in particular are more likely to be at or above grade level, both in the fall and the spring. So, again, they're starting the academic year, they're more likely to start the academic year at or above grade level, and they're more likely to end the academic year at or above grade level. So, there's a real culmination of benefit here. And then, one thing that we did want to look at is, we know that there, in many school districts throughout Minnesota, there are disparities between different groups of students. So, we wanted to see if there were differences in academic outcomes within different groups of students. And there were no differences in retained students' academic performance in race, ethnicity, gender, free or reduced-priced lunch, or limited English proficiency. And so, while that means that we're not necessarily closing any disparity gaps that you may have in the school district, it also shows that all of the students are benefiting at the same rate. And then, because we have shown that attending more sessions and attending for more years is, leads to positive outcomes, we wanted to make sure that students were satisfied with the program, because that's what's going to incentivize them to come more often. And so, overall, students were incredibly satisfied. So, nearly all students said that they felt welcome and safe in the program, and they enjoyed the program, and they had a say in the program's activities, which I think is very exciting. They tended to feel respected by their peers, and they often reported that they had friends in the program, which is also a great motivator for students to attend. And then, as you know, the adults that the students work with in the program are either school teachers, and there's a teacher in every classroom that's from the school district, and then often, we also have partner teachers, visiting teachers that come in. And so, we just asked about the adults in general, and students felt that adults in the program treat them fairly and respect them and the way their family does things at home. And then, most students reported that there's at least one adult that cares about them and cares about what they have to say. Students felt that they could identify someone that they could talk to when they had a problem, and they could identify at least one adult that they really look up to, and that they want to be like when they grow up, is the way the question is worded. And then, we did ask all of the students to report what their favorite aspect of the program was, and these are always really exciting to read, and sometimes, the younger students are particularly fun to read. But I think one of the really great takeaway messages is that the majority of students said that the program was fun. And then, I thought that these three key quotes were a nice way to capture the overall messages that students gave. So, one student said, "I get to be myself, I don't need to be how I don't want to be. It's fun, and I lose time when I'm in the program, and I feel good when I'm in this program." And I think those really speak to the other outcomes that I just reported on. And many students said that they like everything about the program. And many students said that they like everything about the program. Some students were willing to elaborate a little bit more than that, and some of the key themes that came up is that students really enjoy building relationships, relationships with other students, relationships with adults. Students reported that they learn new things, they learn new skills, they learn new ways to interact, and a lot of students enjoyed the activity choices. They felt like they had a lot of options available to them, and they had things that were really appealing to them personally, things that they could get excited about. Many students commented that the teachers were their favorite part of the program, they felt cared about, they felt supported by teachers. Some students talked about gaining coping skills, so learning how not to argue with classmates, learning how to be calm, learning what to do when they're upset. And many students commented on getting the opportunity to try new things that they wouldn't have otherwise been able to try and gain new experiences. Another theme that came up is the opportunity to help others. And this was either formally through classes where the goal was to help other people or community service, and sometimes it's informally, like helping somebody feel better when they're upset. Many students talked about enjoying the creative expression that they had the opportunity to explore in the classes, and I like that they say that it helps them express their feelings in different ways. And then some students, particularly this year, talked about getting an opportunity to be active or exercise, move around. And so overall, I think it's very clear that the participation satisfaction and results associated with this program are incredibly positive. There are a large number of students participating, over 1,000, and the participation is just as diverse as the overall school district is. Students tend to be really highly satisfied with the program, and that's, I think, a sign of why they keep coming back and why those recruitment and retention numbers tend to be so high. And there's also a lot of strong evidence for academic and social emotional gains associated with the program, particularly with greater participation. So there's a clear benefit to students attending regularly, both within an academic year and across academic years. This is my final slide.
Any questions from anybody, comments?
Do we know why Encore helps with reading and math scores? Have we been able to drill that down? Any ideas?
So a lot of our programs are specifically math, science, and literacy-based, so it's more time working on those areas. And then it's also coming at those subjects from a slightly different way than they do it during the school day. And so what we know is that it's not just more time doing what they did during the school day, but it's expanding on those subject areas, kind of with a twist, or, you know, in a different way. And that complementing of what's happening during the school day seems to make the difference.
I also believe that some of the other skills that they're learning about how to learn and how to engage in school are probably also leading to that. It's just that we are only looking at reading and math scores with standardized tests, that's all we're able to look at. And so there may be other subjects that they're benefiting in as well, but it's an overall skill set that they're building.
Well, obviously, the after-school, extra time is making a difference, so that's great.
So my question is, excuse me, looks like we're, you know, pleased with the results we're getting, what's next? I mean, what?
So this grant ends at the end of the school year, and we are in the process of writing our application for the next round for this grant.
Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. All right, next on our agenda is our Spanish pilot at Highland Elementary, and this evening we have Dwayne Burkas, Director of Teaching and Learning, and Michelle DeWitt, our Highland Elementary Principal.
Chair Bardell, Ms. Brandon Kelly, members of the board, pleased to be here tonight with Principal DeWitt to talk about the pilot program that we'd like to brag a little bit about. Principal DeWitt will talk about some of the things that they are finding from this program, describe it to you. One of the things that I'd just like to comment on at the start is, it's almost counterintuitive, but we know that learning a second language is easier if your first language is strong, and that the combination of learning your language and another language actually makes you better in both. And so, and we also know, I think probably what we all do know is that little minds are like sponges, and that they pick up things quickly, and I'll let Principal DeWitt talk about her evidence of that. We have a pilot. Like all pilots, when we have success, we look towards expansion. Our thought is, I'll just say it at the start here, that we would like to expand this in the year ahead. We were looking at the possibility of second grade at Highland and also Valley View. But I'm probably getting a little bit ahead of the, just want you to hear what's happening right now in K-1 at Highland. So I'll turn it over to Principal DeWitt.
Good evening, Director Bardell, members of the board.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you know what, we can go through this one together, I forgot about this, sorry, Michelle. I did put this at the start, as we are now with all of our slides, and I think this is just another example how we are creating worlds of opportunities for every learner, that this is part of that mission of ours, and the core values. In the next slide, then, talk about what we would see as some of those, including, in the end, what we are looking for in all of our classrooms is excellence. And we believe that, in that three-to-three march towards literacy, that this is another way that assists us in accomplishing that.
All right, so the program at Highland Elementary is content enrich foreign language in elementary schools or FLESS. And we really chose this type of Spanish instruction, because we're obviously not an immersion school, we're also not a dual-language elementary school, but we're enriching instruction through the use of teaching a foreign language, Spanish. We're enriching content, meaning that we're sticking with our regular content that we have at all three elementary schools for literacy, mathematics, social studies, science, et cetera. And we're adding a twist by teaching elementary, kindergarten, first graders the content both in English and in Spanish. We're also really developing the children's ability to communicate, general communication with peers and their teachers in both English and Spanish. So the children have an opportunity, one of their favorite things that they like to do is puppet show, they have little puppets, and they talk to classmates in Spanish. So they've been practicing asking questions and responding to simple questions, both in English and Spanish, because for kindergartners, you know that answering questions, often you'll get a blank stare back at you. So they're practicing actually in both languages. The general premise of FLESS is to provide the opportunity to learn language at an early age, thus achieve higher levels of language proficiency in the long term. A quote from Rhonda Lingan, who is my Spanish teacher, she's also an English language teacher, taught English language at Highland for the last two years, or the previous two years. She, in her previous life, was a high school Spanish teacher in another school district, and she said that her kindergartners and first graders in the first quarter picked up more Spanish than her high schoolers did in half of a term. Because of just what Director Burkas said, the little sponges learning everything very quickly. Our hope is that we will create a bridge to the middle school, to Columbia Academy, and to the high school language programs for both native and non-native speakers in Spanish, which obviously is not yet established. However, Principal Busman and I had a meeting about teacher evaluation today, and we kind of diverged to the subject of Spanish and said, "Be prepared to have Spanish in sixth FLESS goals for specific student groups for non-native Spanish speakers. The idea is that students gain basic communication skills and develop vocabulary in Spanish. So all of our kindergartners and first graders now know colors, basic shapes, numbers, to at least 10, many students know to 30. As I said, basic phrases, everything with a calendar, so they know the weather in English and Spanish, they know the days of the week, most of the months. So you think of, that's a typical kindergarten skill that we're teaching with calendar. Now all of the students know it in English and Spanish. We also review content while learning Spanish. So again, as Director Burkas said, it's really the double dose, but it's, what we're finding in our findings is it's really speeding our English development with our kindergartners. So how much, or how quickly they learned their colors, if they didn't know it coming in, they learned it faster by having it presented both in English and Spanish. For native Spanish speakers, it's to develop literacy skills in their native language, to have the opportunity to access content through their native language, and foster confidence in being a leader or a model in the academic setting of school. Ms. Lingan also runs a native Spanish-speaking group, so once weekly, she has a group of native Spanish speakers in both kindergarten and first grade that meet, that review all of the skills that they're working on in Spanish class, they review them fully in Spanish It is valuable, it is a valuable use for, is it a valuable use of our instructional time, if I can talk? So I presented a couple of pieces of research. In addition to developing a lifelong ability to communicate with people from other countries and backgrounds, other benefits include improved overall school performance and superior problem-solving skills. Another piece of research cited, a study of 13,000 or 13,200 third and fifth graders in Louisiana public schools, revealed that regardless of race, gender, or academic level, children taking foreign language classes did better on the English section of the Louisiana Basic Skills Test than those who did not. We're also finding very similar results that, as I said, in the kindergarten assessment, because it is a very specific test that we give quarterly, we are able to see that with Spanish instruction, the content that we're enriching with Spanish, the kindergartners are able to attain that content quicker. I'm not going to go through all of these pieces, but we did have sound methodology for this program. It wasn't something that we just picked out of the sky, we did quite a bit of research and really looked at how often we would need to meet, so the regularity, plus enriching content rather than adding on things that we're not teaching already. We could have added on teaching the kids lots of random things in Spanish, but we felt it was much more valuable to stick with the content that we already have. How does, how will this affect our non-Spanish-speaking English language learners? And again, the research shows that we're increasing the level of skill both in English vocabulary for our non-Spanish speakers as well as our native Spanish speakers. Another piece, it just kind of, we're learning as we go, and we're really noting some kind of special things with the program by just starting it up from the ground, but we've noted that our non-English speakers, non-Spanish speakers, so maybe their native Arabic speaker, are really learning Spanish quickly. So once you're moving into a third and/or fourth language, they're able to learn much quicker than any of our other language groups. So that was another side note, that we found that they are star students, especially in What does the program at Highland look like? So right now, we are rotating Ms. Lingan in our morning meetings to all of our K-1 classrooms. So obviously, she's not going every day, but she has a rotating schedule. She spends approximately 30 minutes per day in each kindergarten and first grade classroom. She works on things like daily calendar, numbers, weather, counting, days, months. This is really specific to kindergarten. By now, kindergarten and first grade has accomplished all of those areas. Week-long curricular units that combine language and content standards, so this is really moving into the literacy-based content standards. And then she has native speaker reading groups that I talked about earlier. She's really sticking with the foreign language standards, as well as the Minnesota State Standards for Kindergarten, First Grade, and Literacy. And that's it. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to tour a Chinese immersion school in one of our school board conferences, and I was amazed to hear how the brain expands, actually, when you learn additional language, and it carries over to more than just language ability, but all areas of learning. So that kind of backs up what you're saying here. But it sounds like you're able to meet all the content standards and still spend the time teaching the Spanish as well. Is that correct?
It is. What we're doing is we're review, if we teach something, obviously, in kindergarten, we're teaching calendar to all students. So that's a typical skill that we have as part of our math curriculum. So we spend often multiple doses of teaching the days of the week, and counting first to 10, and then to 30, that's part of the calendar, weather that you have. Well, rather than repeating it in English all the time, because we have several months of learning the calendar, lots of the repetition now is in Spanish. So you, one day you may have it in English, one day you may have it in Spanish, it depends on if it's your day for that time of the day, because it's a rotating cycle. So Ms. Lingan may come in during your calendar time, she may come in during reading time, she may come in during your writing time, it just kind of depends on what the skill is that day. But it's never introductory, it's always a review. So it does take quite a bit of work between Ms. Lingan and the kindergarten and first grade teachers to really know where each teacher is at with the content. High level of professionalism on her part, really going the extra mile.
Any other questions, comments?
I bet Ms. Palmer can articulate the advancement of her daughter in Spanish.
Yes, she's constantly quizzing me on, "What's my favorite color?" "No, say it in Spanish." I'm like, "I don't know it in Spanish." But of course, she also knows how to sing a song with all of the calendar months in Spanish, which I, that was at the winter sing, which I thought was really quite delightful. So, yeah, it's, she's learned a lot, and I have no idea what it is. I don't speak Spanish, so.
Hence why we want to move to second grade, just to really keep the learning moving forward. The first graders are definitely ready for conversational Spanish, and the kindergartners are answering simple questions, like, "How are you?", and maybe, "What did you do last night?", but being able to ask the questions and then respond back in Spanish.
Can I go back to first gr-, no. No, it sounds really interesting, and I hope we have the opportunity to keep it going. I mean, it sounds like it's meeting all, basically, the goals that you had for it. So, and, you know, it's, as Ted said, you know, the data's showing that it's helping students in all areas of academics, so.
We are collecting pretty extensive data. As I said, with our kindergarten assessments, I would be happy to come back at the end of the school year when we have that compiled, because we did, we assessed all of our Spanish speakers, both in English and Spanish, and then we're going to be assessing all learners, obviously, at the end of the school year, but paying particular attention to how much did they advance in both languages. So because the kindergarten assessment is given quarterly, it's a good basis for us to measure all of these skills, and it's pretty comprehensive.
All right?
I just wanted to really thank Principal DeWitt and the Highland staff for pioneering this, because we're learning so much about it, and I know that Director Burkas has already alluded to the fact that Valley View Elementary staff and Principal Fort have been up to shadow the program, to look at the curriculum writing, to see how well it will to look at the curriculum writing, to see how it will work on their site. And that is one of the major considerations we're considering in staffing this year is expanding that program to show what we know to another building.
Thank you very much, thanks for sharing. Next on our agenda is Indian Education Resolution in accordance with Minnesota Statute 124D78. The Board will review the American Indian Education Committee affirming that the committee does concur that the director's program, programs meet American Indian student needs.
Chair Bardell, members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly, thank you. The statute requires annually that the school board of every district reviews the committee's resolution that the, the agreement that we have between Spring Lake Park and Fridley and Columbia Heights, which provides a small amount of money generated by American Indian students. There's a coordinator, Karen Monet, and she's been doing it for many years. Basically, what you're reviewing is that the committee that comprises of parents and teacher representatives and community members of American Indian children from our three districts, that their needs are being met by the American Indian program.
All right. You know, it was in, it's in our materials and we had a chance to review it. Any questions on this, comments? All right, and some we have to do annually.
Correct. And I would like to put a plug in that, thanks to Superintendent Kelly, attending the powwow between the three districts, which was held at Fridley last year, she invited the American Indian Committee to have a powwow in our district and invite the community and get it on your calendar. It's Saturday, April twenty-sixth. And hopefully, we'll have good weather so the dancers can be outside and there'll be food and fun. And we're, we're going to try to rival the Latino Arts Festival. That'd be pretty hard to match that, it was so fantastic. But we're really excited to bring the American Indian community members of Columbia Heights and Southern Fridley and Hilltop to our school to have a powwow.
Great.
They are so much fun. They are, it's been many years, but I, I attended one back in, I think, the eighties. Just amazing. Good, good times.
All right. Do we know how many American Indian students we have in our district?
How we gather the information is for, in detesis is when the families fill out their race and ethnicity when they enroll in our district. And so we have a hundred and twelve, I think it is, this year. However, when the American Indian Committee comes and works and they do crafts and they do lessons on history, American history, at all our buildings with our students, all the families have to do is say that they are American Indian and that they have tribal affiliation. And she ends up with about two hundred kids in our district. So, we don't turn anybody away if they have tribal affiliation and if they want to participate in the activities, we welcome them. So, the count is a little bit different depending if you go online and look at MDE's version versus the families who have tribal affiliation, so.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda this evening is summer programming. Dwayne Burkas, Nicole Hallaby, and Kristen Stonkel.
Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, I guess it is spring because Chair Bardell declared it so. Get ready for summer, because it's just around the corner, we hope. But we, again, feel that in order to live up to our mission, that we must provide a wealth of opportunities in the summer as well. And I think you'll see that we plan to do so again with your support, in the hope that, again, that we can reach that level of excellence in all that we do, but also that we build community, that we work with our community. I, I feel that those two are probably two very important core values and that that collaboration across departments, across different entities is, is definitely part of our summer programming. We do bring the summer programs to you every year to talk about what we're planning so that we can hopefully get your approval to move forward with hiring and putting these programs in place. So, each of us will take a turn at describing what we'll be helping organize. So, Director Hallaby will start.
So, with early childhood special ed, so students that are under six years old, it's required by law that they receive year-round special ed services. As Principal DeWitt said, little sponge brains, so we want to get all the learning in throughout the summer. So they'll be home visiting done for the birth to two-year-olds and then the three to six-year-olds will have programming. And the dates are a little bit different for them because they try to accommodate families and they can only take about a quarter of a day per session. They can't take even a half day at three-years-old. And then we run a DCD program for our kids, K-12, as well as we'll be working with teaching and learning and running a program for elementary kids and having some team teaching with special ed staff to accommodate the special ed kids that are at the secondary level that Director Burkas will refer to, as well as Director Stonkel and myself collaborate on Bridges to Kindergarten and she'll probably mention that.
Many of our programs as well will be continued from previous years. Elementary Summer School, as Director Hallaby alluded to, is something that runs around, usually three hundred and fifty students. We will shoot for that number again. We run it for four weeks, five days a week, and it is in Highland. We, we wait until Summer Academy vacates so that we can get into that particular elementary school where they have a little bit of cool air in the summer. Columbia Academy as well has, for the last two years, had a summer program. And we will plan on running that again specifically for those two key areas of literacy and math. Those will be run at the high school for five weeks. We always bring in our secondary EL students at the level of one and two so that they can continue to learn English over the summer. We anticipate that that would be around thirty students again. High school has changed a great deal in terms of our summer offerings because of the change in testing that we have now. And because of that, our summer program for the high school is much more focused on getting students credits that they may be behind on, that they may need to make up. So it's a very, very intensive program for those students because it's a shorter period of time. But we go for four hours a day, five days a week for five weeks. And so, we will be offering a set of courses there again. And then finally, we continue the English Learner's Summer Reading Program where we have teachers that visit homes and read with families, leave books behind and come back the next week and do the same thing. So, all of these programs have run before and we look forward to running them again and hope that we can get the numbers that, that we're looking for there.
This district really is a year-round district, isn't it? With community education as well. Some of our programs are specific to the summer and some are year-round programs. Director Hallaby already mentioned our Bridges to Kindergarten program. That is that three-week program shortly before school starts to really help prepare students for success in kindergarten. And we have twenty-five students in three classrooms each, so a total of seventy-five students. We run a Summer Adventure Club with a lot of fun activities, including a curriculum out in Blooming Heights Edible Schoolyard. We have Mini Adventures, which is a year-round childcare program for our preschool-age students. Blooming Heights, our garden specialist, Bonnie Loman, does work throughout the summer from eight AM to four PM. So she is doing programming out there in, in Blooming Heights. We are hoping, this is tentative, we are hoping to do Environmental Club and Outdoor Club again this summer. That is a tentative plan at this point. For adults in our community, we do have water exercise still going through the summer, as well as our fitness classes such as yoga, tai chi, and zumba. And then also the Community Swim Time, which is on Saturdays. And if anyone, even now in the winter, wants to do a little swimming on a Saturday with your family, we do have that Community Swim Time that is a year-round program through community education.
The other big program, as you know, is Summer Academy and they'll be back again this year and running for three weeks after, just after school is out. They take over the high school and Highland. They're running almost at a hundred, a thousand students. So it gets very, very busy here very fast. And we kind of come in after they're done with a lot more programming of our own. Finally, we always have teachers coming forward with ideas or directors coming forward with ideas, coordinators coming forward. Just want to give you a heads up that these are ideas that we bounce around, if not for this school year, maybe another, where we would have, we tried Engineering Camp last year and I think it was a success. Building on that is a thought again for this year. An AP Boot Camp where we could have our students who are coming into the high school in ninth grade and our tenth graders where they could get that extra literacy boost that sometimes is the difference between getting a three on a test, getting that, being able to get college credit on an AP test. So, some talk of that. And then, I'm sorry, the Maker Fair is, we're hoping for more than five kids there, but that is really basically a tinker camp, a camp where kids come and make things. And we have some interesting ideas that we'd like to consider for that. I won't promise on any of those, but those are ideas that we would, we'd like to pilot. Any questions for us?
Questions, comments?
Oh, I love the Engineering Camp. My, my son attended that last year and that was really, really neat. They had, they had all of these projects that they had to, you know, they had to create a shelter and they could only use certain materials and it, it was really, really neat. And the weather was fabulous, too. They got very lucky, the weather was really good, so. Just keep our fingers crossed next year here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this, this accomplishes two, two main goals that we've always tried to establish is, one, make the most efficient use of our resources throughout the summer, so our buildings just don't sit empty. So that's great. And then, I know Dr. Burkas, you and I have talked about the brain drain that happens over the summer. And that's throughout, throughout education. And hopefully, this helps lessen that effect over the summer.
Yeah. Questions, comments, anymore? Well done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, World's Best Workforce, Dwayne Burkas.
Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, I have talked to you before about the World's Best Workforce and I know that some of you have probably been to much more dynamic speakers' presentations than us, too. So I'll go through this quickly.
Couldn't say that.
But I think, again, what World's Best Workforce is really saying from a state level, that they want us to build these core values in all of our students so that we do have a strong workforce going into the future. And they do give us some pretty specific guidelines in terms of what we need to do in order to meet the letter of the law in terms of the World's Best Workforce. So, there is new legislation. And with that, we are required to build a plan. And that plan shouldn't be something brand-new. It really should be a plan that incorporates our district strategic plan at its center, at its core, that we also tie it to our annual integration and achievement plan and if there are any other major things that we're working on. But that district strategic plan really is at the heart of what they would like us to, to talk about and to measure. In addition to that, there is a required annual public meeting on this plan that I'll talk more about in just a moment. But the plan itself then must be put together then by the District Advisory Committee. And this is a new committee, this is one that we have not had in the past. So really, I, I think our, one of our main goals, and coming back to you tonight about this, is to say that we need a committee with community members, administrators, and teachers. And this committee should reflect our community, should reflect our district as best we can. So we are working with Superintendent Kelly to come up with a list of names to propose to you to serve on that committee. And we'll be bringing that forward to you through the, the board packet very shortly, along with a set of possible dates for this committee to meet. And then a possible date for a spring meeting, probably, we're guessing, should be in the month of May. Needs to be before the end of the school year on our plan, on the World's Best Workforce Plan. So what is that plan going to include? Well, these are the key components that the state has suggested that we, suggested that we have in it. First of all, the achievement goals. And those achievement goals now for us are really closely tied to integration and achievement plans where there is a formula. It's not guess our best at what we would like. They really do have some things that they would like us to do in terms of reducing the achievement gap and providing a push for all students towards excellence. In addition to that, we have to talk about our strategies. How are we going to achieve that? And that's where we will point to our district strategic plan and how we feel that will be our best pathway to that. The program evaluation in terms of is our program making a difference? What's working, what's not? Again, from the strategic plan. And then to also be able to continue to work for community input. And this is an important part of it, that we have different venues or different ways that we can get input from our community. Those data points then you'll see are, include everything from achievement, I'm sorry, from achievement tests that we must give to our vision cards that you have seen and to committee feedback or survey feedback. So the plan itself is something that we do largely for our own benefit to see how well we are doing, are we making a difference? We do have to submit it to the state, but it's not something that is then approved or disapproved. It's, it's just simply, we have to do it. So, it's meant to be a way to bring, I think, all of the different work that we're, good work that we're doing together and be able to look at it as a, as a team and say, what's working, what do we need to improve on? So, we're looking forward to getting going and just wanted to let you know tonight that we will be coming forward then with those names and those dates.
Questions for Dwayne, comments?
To set that, for the public, that this is really something that's driven by Minnesota statutes, the legislature.
Yes, it's new, this from the, this last session. And, and all of this comes from the state legislature.
We need to adapt to it.
We'll have to do it, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Dwayne.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda this evening, board policies. We have a first reading. Two zero three point five, school board meeting agenda. Two zero five, open meetings and closed. Two zero eight, development, adoption, and, excuse me, implementation of policies. These policies will appear on future agenda for approval. They'll be posted for a first reading, so if anyone has any comments, send them on in. All right. Move on to our action items. Our first action item is repeal of policy six fourteen. Board will be asked for repeal of policy six fourteen. It's called School District Testing Plan and Procedure. Let's see. We have, Dwayne, you going to talk about that, or? I, I mean, I, I know generally that we no longer need this policy because it's been superseded.
Yes, I, I believe that there's, and this policy, as in many, there's, there's been a lot of changes, especially in terms of our grad testing procedure. So, I believe that if this is repealed, we will be coming back with a lot more in terms of our assessment pieces. And we will need to have an assessment policy in place. So, while this change tonight is going to remove this one, we're going to have to come back with our, with a, a new policy on that, so, and which we will do.
Have a motion to move this forward? Motion by Ted, second by John, any discussion?
So are there additional statutes, then, that would require a new policy?
Yeah, there's, there's so many changes in terms of, you know, grad testing is gone completely now. There is no law, there's rules in place right now for graduates from this year that are going to be different, different from those from next year. So it's a, it's a massively different landscape now that we're working with. We're waiting on some, probably some major news from M.D. to on what that next, especially at the high school level, testing arrangement will look like, and some rumors on what that might be. But it has, it has changed a great, great deal as a result of the waiver that was put into place, where things that had to be there no longer do because of the waiver.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, and that motion is carried. Thanks, Dwayne. Next on our agenda, we have a second reading of some board policies. Five zero four, student dress and appearance. Five zero nine, enrollment of non-resident students. Five twenty six, hazing prohibition. Five twenty seven, student use and parking of motor vehicles. Patrols, inspections, and searches. Six zero two, organization of school calendar and school day. Six zero three, curriculum development. Six thirteen, graduation requirements. Six twenty, credits for learning. Eight zero six, crisis management policy. These policies appeared on the January fourteenth meeting for a first reading approval. We saw it at tonight's meeting. So I know there's some questions about a couple policies. Should we run a motion first and then talk about it?
Can I move that we just pull those policies for separate consideration, and then we can vote on the rest? We just move the, remove those, and then consider it after? Can we move those, those two policies, six oh three and six twenty, to the next item on the agenda, so that we can take care of the other ones?
Any?
You making the motion?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm a little foggy tonight.
I'll second that.
Is it six oh three and?
Six twenty.
Okay, we have a motion, and a sec, motion by Laura, second by Ted, to move six oh three and six twenty out of this agenda item and move it to the next agenda item, and...
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
There was another policy where it mentioned tape recording. I'm trying to find what...
That was in the first reading?
First reading, okay, okay. Thank you. So that doesn't matter, then?
Okay. So then the idea would be, is would you remove those, and then, I mean, we got to vote on it, so. Any, any more discussion on removing six zero three and six twenty?
Be specific on what you're doing with it, though. That's what I'd like to know.
Any other discussion on moving six zero three, curriculum development, and policy six twenty, credit for learning, to the next agenda item out of this agenda item, to discuss separately?
May I?
Yeah.
For clarification, there's just a question about whether or not we need to pull some items out of there, because there's been a change in statute. So, the reasoning being is just pull it out. Let's just deal with the bulk of this, and then let's go on and deal with those separately.
All right. Any further discussion?
Yeah, in specific, we want to make sure the statutory language is appropriate. That's why we want to discuss it further.
Yeah. Yeah, I just didn't know we were going to do this route. I thought we were going to talk about it during the regular board meeting, but, during the agenda, regular agenda item.
Either way, as long as we have consideration of it.
I get it.
And a conversation, dialogue, I think that's what we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to accomplish, yeah. All right, so motion on the table to move six zero three, policy six zero three and six twenty for a separate agenda item after following this one for separate consideration and discussion. Any other comments on that? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion is carried. So now, do I have a motion on the remaining policies?
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Ted, second by Laura. Any discussion on the remaining policies, other than six zero three and six twenty?
I just have one general question about student dress and appearance. Does this policy seem to be working well, Superintendent Kelly? I know we've had issues in the past, but...
Is that six oh three? Are we?
Five oh four.
Five oh four.
Sorry. It, it seems to be working very well.
Okay, thank you.
Particularly, it's more that we move toward uniforms, though.
Okay.
And the substantive change to that policy actually was to allow for uniforms, you know, to make it more general. So it wasn't proscriptive, sort of, allowing uniforms.
I think to answer Ted's question, I, I would concur. I mean, the, the times that I've been up, specifically at the high school, I think that the policy is, is being followed, I mean, far better than I think previously in the past, so.
Okay. And the reason I ask, we want to make sure we have a policy that's, that's workable, and that actually accomplishes our goals, so, thank you.
All right. Any further discussion on those remaining policies? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, and that motion is carried. Next agenda item is talk about six zero three, curriculum development, and six twenty, credit for learning. So there are some concerns about...
What I, what I'm going to ask, since there are concerns, is that the directors responsible for these particular policies just come to the front as well, so that we can clarify or pull or whatever we need to do? Thank you, Chair Bardell, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Six twenty was the only one I was alerted to prior to coming in by a member, Landwehr, regarding the outdated language of profile for learning. And that's why I discussed it with Director Burkas.
Would you like me to speak to, to that particular piece? Yeah. The profile of learning, I think, is, yes, that is a part of the education world that is no longer in existence. So if the board would like us to take that back and make sure that that is removed, it should, it does not need to be in policy, because we do not have to do the profile for learning anymore. So it's, it's extra. It, it should probably come out, yeah.
And so if, if it would be all right with you if we took it back and cleaned it ourselves, rather than waiting for the next school board subcommittee on policy, since it's already been through, and then we would bring it, the cleaned version, version for a second reading the next time. If that's all right with you, that's what we would do. And it would be merely cleaning up the language on the profile of learning.
Yeah, I apologize. I've not had a lot of time to go back and look at what, what needs to happen with that particular policy, but I'll, I will. I'll go back and look. The profile of learning is not needed anymore, so we'll, I'm not quite sure what...
And if it's anything more than that, then we would bring it, re-refer it back. We'd just bring it back to our next subcommittee on school policy. So either way, if it's more complicated than that, we will bring it back to committee. If it seems clearly just a language of expunging the profile of learning from the policy, that we would bring that back to you and just explain that to you at the meeting.
My only question would be, could you bring, is, is it a violation of procedure to bring it back after you've expunged the language of the profile of learning and treated it as a second reading? Or do we need to treat it as a first reading again, because we've changed the policy?
You could do that. You could do that.
Do it as a first, because then it has to be, has to be given to the public also.
Right, then we can provide for comment time.
That'd be fine.
Yeah, I believe if it's just simply, just a simple slight language change, or a comma here, or the wrong word there, you know, that, that, that simple stuff can be taken care of and passed on. Or you don't have to bring it back for a first reading for, just simply a...
What we really need to do is look at it a little bit more to actually know. And so, we're saying one way or the other, we will look at it and take the appropriate actions, and either bring it back to the subcommittee or directly to the board.
Okay.
So also clarifying, is that where we're going to do a six zero three curriculum development?
Well, that, that I'm curious on what the question is.
I have a question on that, if I may.
Sure.
The reason I asked about this was, in our subcommittee meeting prior to this meeting, we, we mentioned that the No Child Left Behind Act actually has a waiver that Minnesota is under. So, and I noticed in this policy under C seven, it mentions that our curriculum will meet all the requirements of the Minnesota Department of Education in the No Child Left Behind Act. Is that still appropriate, or is that something that we should delete?
In my opinion, that's still appropriate, because behind that waiver is still the No Child Left Behind Act, which does require things like measuring proficiency of segments of our student population, broken down by ethnicity, by free reduced lunch. All of those components are still there. So it's still the bedrock, I think, of what is happening in education. So I don't think we're ready to be pulling out No Child Left Behind from, as a reference to what is, you know, behind that waiver and behind everything that we do. We're still, it's an odd thing, I know, but it, we still, it's still there, and it still kind of is the driving force of how accountability works.
So it's still relevant to curriculum development?
I believe it is, because we still have, have to meet those high expectations in math and reading and science. So I would say it still is a, a key component of what we do.
Okay.
And then, if I may, if, until they reauthorize the elementary, secondary ESEA, or I used to call it the, the federal programs grants, we're going to have to go, it's, and Congress has been dragging its feet on reauthorizing that. It was supposed to be done last year, and it has not been done. So that's really, I think, when the federal level changes it, then, if they go to a new system, then we would change.
Well, I would move this policy, then, for adoption.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Ted, second by John, to move six zero three curriculum development for adoption. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. The motion is carried. Thank you very much, Nicole and Dwayne. Appreciate it. Thanks. All right. Next up, we have Mr. Matt Miller, our K-12 activities director. He's going to talk to us about the Minnesota State High School League grant.
Good evening, Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the school board. I'm here to ask you to approve the, the resolution for a grant from the Minnesota State High School League. Now, this grant, the, the application for this grant is annually, so from my department, I have to fill out an application yearly. And this grant is regarding our free and reduced numbers here at Columbia Heights.
Okay. Do I have a motion to move that forward?
Some.
Motion by Ted, second by Missy. I do have a question. There's a Form A and a Form B.C.
Yes.
So, so is it two, two separate grants?
No, no. So there's an opportunity to apply for two separate grants, but we're applying for C, and then Form A, that's required just to submit.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you. I'll just read the resolution real quick. Whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota high school youth and participate, to participate in athletics and fine arts, whereas District thirteen school board recognized the value of students' participation in extracurricular activities, whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist school district in recognizing, promoting, and funding extracurricular participation by high school students in athletic and fine arts programs. Therefore, be it resolved that Columbia Heights School Board supports the district's application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation for a Form A grant, Form B.C. grant, to offset student activity fees. All right. Any further questions, discussion? It's a resolution. Do you call a roll, please?
Meyer.
Aye.
Lanier.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Bardell.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Lee.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. All right. Next, we have presenter Lindsey Bennett, Director of Human Resources, Bill Holmgren, Director of Finance and Operations. And this is our annual resolution directing Superintendent Administration to consider discontinuance of programs and positions to effectuate economies in the school district and reduce expenditures. And normally, we would do this in January, but there was something about the weather, I don't know, I forgot already, so.
Chair Bardell, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, that is right, we were supposed to be here two weeks ago to present this, but we can do it tonight. So tonight, we are here seeking approval of the resolution, which does direct the Superintendent Administration to consider discontinuance of programs and positions, curtailment of programs or positions to effectuate economies in the school district and reduce expenditures.
Do I have a motion to move that forward?
I'll move that forward.
I'll second. Motion by Laura, second by Ted. Any questions, comments?
Just a, just a comment. Every year, we, we have this come forward, and the purpose that I understand is that allows the administration and staff to be able to really look at what the needs of the students are, and be able to make decisions that may not be 100% comfortable. But this, this, this allows them the flexibility for being able to revisit all the programs, just because they've been there for a long time, you know, make sure that they're, they're doing what they should. And for levels of staffing, have I got that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Not very eloquent, but correct.
Oh, pretty good.
Okay.
Now, I'll read what the resolution says here. Resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore. Whereas there may be a reduction, excuse me, in school finances, and whereas this reduction in expenditures and school finances may include discontinuance of positions and discontinuance or curtailment of programs, and whereas a determination must be made as to which teachers' contracts and programs must be terminated and not renewed, and which teachers may be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits and affecting discontinuance of positions and programs. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the school board of independent school district number thirteen, Columbia Heights hereby directs the superintendent schools administration to consider the discontinuance of programs or positions to effectuate economies in the school district and reduce expenditures as necessary, and as a result of a reduction in school finances, make recommendations to the school board for the discontinuance of programs, curtailment of programs, discontinuance of positions, or curtailments of positions. All right. Any other discussion, comments?
Yeah. The ceiling other thing is that our, our, our responsibility as a board is to also be efficient with our resources, and this resolution is our way of saying that. We want to be efficient.
Very good. All right. Call the roll, please.
Meyer.
Aye.
Lanier.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Bardell.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Lee.
Very good. That resolution has passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In February, instead of January. Right. Last action item, board chair election. In our organization meeting, in, in the meeting that followed, we had a resolu, or a roll call vote for board election, and it was tied three, three. Director Landwehr and I are up for election for board chair. Any, prior to, is it appropriate to make comment at this point, prior to the vote, or not? Can I, can?
I believe so.
Sure. Okay. I just, I, I know that last time, we, we had an opportunity to, to hear certainly some statements in favor of, and I wanted to just take a moment to read a couple things that I have here in reference to Chair Bardell. These are my personal thoughts. Scott's been the board chair for less than a year, in my opinion. He's truly just getting settled in. During that timeframe, I personally feel that he's done a really good job. He's been open to suggestions, communications, very approachable, fair, unbiased, and mediating as we go through our discussions here. Encourages people to speak, and I truly believe he runs an efficient meeting. My personal belief is, I don't know that we... My personal belief is, I don't know that we need to make a change at this time and I feel that Scott should be allowed to continue to grow in his position as a board chair. I will say that I've had, I listened and have had individual conversations with Member Landwehr. I understand his desire more based on the mention of his daughter being a senior and I guess one of the questions I have, or I guess something that I understood to be the case was that any board member can sign a diploma. Is that an accurate statement? I mean, you don't have to be board chair to do that, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. I guess then my thought to give this point is, is that, you know, keeping that in mind as well and again, I think that my personal opinion is that Scott should be allowed to continue to grow as a board member. That's just a quick statement that I wanted to make. Comments, questions?
I just wanted to say, if I could.
Sure.
That, where I was coming from last, at the organizational meeting, is not so much, well, actually, Mr. Bardell's been chair for two years and this, in 2011, he was acting chair and then, you correct me if I'm wrong, and then in October or November, he became chair when there was an abstention in one of the votes. And then actually in 2000, was it last year? You were board chair the entire year.
Not the entire year, that's not accurate. We didn't see the board chair at the organizational meeting.
You were, there was a tie, there was a tie vote for a few months and then you were nominated and, but you continued on to be chair after that. So my point is, is that, and by the way, I would have nominated you last year. I did ask if your daughter, you know, if you wanted to be chair, because it is an important year. Member Lee had that opportunity to be chair when her daughter graduated, I believe.
Yeah, I've had three more graduates since then and I've signed their diplomas.
Right, and so there is a special honor to being chair when your child graduates. You decline, and I respect that. But in our family and as far as I'm concerned, it's been, it is a special honor. I've served on the board for, I believe it's 11 years now, as I think back, this is my 11th year. And if you remember that, you know, just a fact is that nobody I know of has served this long without, who wanted to be chair and has not been elected chair. What year were you elected chair? Do you remember, Missy? First elected?
I sat and was Keith's chair for quite a while as vice chair.
Right.
I don't remember exactly.
Okay. But it was in 11 years, right? I know, I think you were chair back in 2008, because you wanted to be chair because you're.
Nine?
2009, that's right. Your daughter was graduating at that time.
I wasn't, you know what, I'm going to stop you on that instead of continuing saying that two or three times. That was not what my intent was, to be chair.
I'm not, I'm not saying it is.
Then please don't put it in that connotation, please.
Right, what I'm saying, if you could just indulge me for a second. What I'm saying is that you asked to be chair that year. I agreed to vote for you at that point because of goodwill and courtesy. And I would just say tonight, if you were to elect me chair tonight, it would be a tremendous act of goodwill and courtesy that I would never soon forget. It would be, it would be very courteous. I'd be much appreciative. I've studied, you know, I've studied how to be a good chair throughout the years. As I said last meeting, it's been a dream of mine, especially during the year my daughter graduates and it didn't happen in 2011. I'm asking it to be happening this year because it's my last shot. And do you have to elect me chair? No, but would it be a courteous thing and a kind thing to do? Absolutely. And I would be eternally grateful. So I'll leave the rest in your hands. All right?
Call to roll.
Yeah, I just want to clarify a couple of things because, you know, all due respect, Ted has brought up my daughter in the worst times, which I really don't appreciate because only I should be able to bring up my daughter. But I didn't do that for that reason. I sat with Keith Roberts as chair for several years and mentored under him. And to be, you know, if you want to go back and bring things up, I do believe it was Keith Roberts said that he would have voted for you if you would have taken the time just to sit as vice chair for a while and you turned that down.
I don't think that's correct.
Let me finish.
Sure.
As far as why I was chair was not because my child was a senior. Had zero to do with it. Had everything to do with leadership and what I felt and what my passion was. And so I don't want to be put in the position of saying, you saying that the reason, you know, I was there because of my daughter, that's not it. I've had four children, basically three children and one other one, that have gone through and graduated and I've signed each of their diplomas, not being chair. And, you know, I find it an honor to be on the Board of Education when my children are in this school, there and beyond, to help all children. It isn't just about my children, but everybody's kids that sit in this school. So please don't do that again, I'm asking you. If you want courtesy, please don't do that again. Because that's not why I sat as chair.
And again, I didn't say that tonight and I, I'm sorry if you're offended, but I didn't say it and I didn't imply, mean to imply it. My point again is that you had the honor of being chair when your daughter graduated and I'm just asking for the same, the same honor, that's all.
Call to roll.
Meyer.
Landwehr.
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 Larkin.
Bardell.
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 Palmer.
Landwehr.
Lee. Bardell.
Any reason to take another vote?
No.
I'm hearing one.
We do one tonight.
Typically, we just turn one each meeting.
Sorry. All right, tie, three, three, four topics.
I didn't get to mention this at my, when I was telling what I did. I forgot to mention that I had met with staff regarding college readiness and been talking to numerous people around the community about that. And I just wanted to commend the staff for answering all my questions, as difficult as some of them have been, and really coming forward and searching some things out. So I just, I really appreciate it and appreciate all their hard work, especially trying to meet all the demands that are out there right now to make sure that all kids are college-ready. It's really a difficult thing. I mean, it really is trying to meet every aspect from just all sorts of kids. So, and there's been some really difficult questions answered and I've had a really troubling couple of weeks that I've had some questions and I just, again, you know, to Principal Arrobelaski and like Matt Miller and Nicole Hallaby and Duane, thank you very much for your time, I do appreciate it.
Laura, four topic.
I haven't been rattling my head, trying to figure out if there's something in there, but I think, no, I don't have anything today.
All right, that's okay.
I'm sorry, I know, you always look to me, I always get something to say.
Well.
It's really cold outside.
I was trying to be preemptive.
Yeah, yeah, it's really cold outside, that's my pocket.
In case there's, in case there's confusion, it's college and career readiness as well. Not everyone is.
Thank you.
College-bound, but, but we realize that, I mean, the education system is realizing that it's important to go beyond high school in some capacity, so.
Good point. Laura?
I don't have anything.
John?
I do not, I do not have any.
I'm sure there's important, something important coming up that we're forgetting.
Probably, yeah. That's why I asked, you know, that if there's some event that we care about or want to go, all right.
Most of them already happened.
Okay.
I would have brought them up last meeting, but we didn't have them last, we didn't have them last meeting.
Going twice.
Yeah.
Jurn, 9:00 PM, thank you.